The Zoom chat will be monitored.
No.
It will not be monitored, but we will try to watch for hands when they are raised. So the Vice Chair and Marlene are going to try to manage that. So if you do have a question, raise your hand and the Chair will ask you to unmute at that time. All items within this meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. So I am officially called the meeting to order. Okay? So if the Board does not have any objections.
Well, first, I need to call them.
Your meeting, correct?
Yeah, so there is a quorum of the Wastewater Advisory Committee attending the meeting, so I'm calling the Wastewater Advisory Committee to order.
Okay. You have your meeting.
What about Board of Health?
Board of Health, anyone else have a quorum?
They have a quorum?
I see two members. So no.
One's out in the hall.
Yeah, that's the second one.
So that's three.
That's a quorum. Just two right now.
I found her in where the other one is.
Are they both out in the hall?
No, one out in the hall, one in here.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good there? No other meetings need to be called?
Board of Health.
Okay.
Board of Health.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so if we have no objections from the Board, we only have DEP here for about 30 minutes, and we do feel it's critical to get some of these answers to the comments and to review that. So we are, I am going to ask if somebody could motion or if we can disagree to put, take the discussion, comments, and proposed responses just out of order so that we can utilize that 30 minutes as best available. And then, once they're done, we will certainly open up the floor for our comments and for all of you. So if that is okay with the Board? Anyone satisfied with that? Do we need a motion? No? We can just move on?
No objections.
No objections? Okay. Jean, yes, sorry, Jean is there, but it's here. We just decided to take one item out of order and bring it up for DEP. Thank you. Okay? All right.
I think DEP is on Zoom.
They are on Zoom. Okay. I'm not sure, I can't see the screen, so we will ask them to unmute.
Introduce themselves.
And introduce themselves.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Brian Harrington. I am the Deputy Regional Director for the Bureau of Water Resources in the Southeast Regional Office.
Okay. And we're working to discuss the comments and the proposed responses. I'm not sure who I pass this to. Marlene, do we know where we want to start with that? Or if you were?
So DEP was emailed a list of questions from the Select Board. They are on page two of your packet, and I think that it would make sense to ask if DEP would like to make any comments or answer any of those questions as submitted by the Select Board.
Perfect.
Sure. Try and follow the order. We can get them at the end of last week, so we spend some time trying to put some answers together to help you with this. So, yeah, I think the first one's pretty straightforward. It's really that the regulation is 310 CMR 15.2152 C2. And so that's the watershed permit filing deadline that's in the regulation. So I don't think a lot, there's questions on that one?
Okay.
Just a confirmation if that if the town does file the notice of intent for the watersheds that have TMDLs, that they would have until July 7th of 2030 to file the completed watershed applications.
Excuse me. Could you please speak into the microphones?
These microphones don't work in the room, so I will try to speak loud.
Nobody back here can hear you.
Can hear you, okay.
These are just computer microphones, as well as that one, so we'll try to project as best we can, but just if you.
If there's something important, you should stand up there so we can hear them better.
That microphone is just.
Also for the public. We'll just have to speak louder.
Just throw your hand up, and that'll be the signal that you can't hear us and we'll speak louder.
This is something we will be working on in the future as well. Okay.
So the answer to that is yes, you are correct. The deadline for filing the notice of intent will be this July 7th. You have until July 7th of 2030 to actually obtain the watershed permit or complete the watershed permit application.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next question is what milestones are required to be included in the pre-application schedule that must be filed with the notice of intent?
So it really is going to vary from town to town, and the information you're going to need, what I would suggest is if you do intend to file a notice of intent, we'll work with you in terms of what's required.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the Board regarding that answer? Okay. Marlene, that's anything from you? No, you're, okay, all right.
That really doesn't say anything about what are the milestones. You said you work with us, but do you have any milestones that you may want to let us know may be coming?
So what we're going to do is, I'm sorry, ma'am, we're going to let DEP do their 30 minutes because of the timeline, and then we will promise we'll get you, you all write up for comments on that. We appreciate your understanding there. Keep that in mind. Okay, so moving on. Number three is if a notice of intent, if the notice of intent for the watershed permit is filed after July 7th, will the existing system upgrade requirement timeframe be suspended at the time of the NOI filing? Will, one, will the timeline for completion of the watershed permit application change?
So the filing period ends July 7th of this year. Based on the regulations at 15.2152, the Title V NSA provision can be suspended as part of the watershed permit application, and if applicable, the de minimis nitrogen loan application. Keep in mind, though, that, you know, that the NOI can do that. Just if you elect not to file one by July 7, 2025, you could still do a watershed permit application without the notice of intent, even if you missed that deadline. So it's the deadline for the notice of intent. You can get the benefits that might come from filing the notice of intent by that date, but you can still file a watershed permit application after that.
Very good, thank you. Any questions there from the Board or comments? None? Okay. Thank you for that. So we're moving on. We have four. What is the town's enforcement responsibility for Title V in an NSA without a watershed permit?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
When you're reading abbreviations, you may want to spell what they are. The average person in the room's not going to know what these things mean.
Yeah, NSA, yeah, I thought I covered that earlier. So that would be a, the, I'm sorry.
Nitrogen sensitive.
Nitrogen sensitive area, yes, thank you. I kind of lost my track.
So the real, the role and responsibility under Title V really doesn't change. The local board of health continues in the primary enforcement role for Title V, including the IA system provisions and the nitrogen requirements.
Okay. Comments? Any?
There's some questions?
I know, I see them. I'm getting there. So some questions. As the Title V approving authority, what is the responsibility of the Town of Bourne's Board of Health to foster compliance with 310 CMR 15.002 and 15.212 after July 7th and after July 7, 2030?
Okay. So the Board of Health rule really doesn't change. You should be issuing permits that meet Title V and any local bylaws. Home rule does allow you to form local bylaws, including requirements that are more stringent than Title V, but your local bylaw can't reduce or lessen the Title V requirement. It's, you know, the town's responsibility to identify its mechanisms to ensure compliance with Title V. You know, typically, that's your permitting, or either new construction or upgrades as appropriate, and, you know, the enforcement of those obligations on the individual property owners.
Okay. Comments? So the B, what are the penalties to the town of the Board of, if the Board of Health does not enforce a requirement after July 7th and July 7, 2030? And how will the penalties be enforced?
Okay. So the, these provisions in Title V are relatively new. You know, the new construction and nitrogen-sensitive area requirements became effective July 2024, and frankly, we haven't had occasion to address any failure here. So I can't point you to say this is what we've done in the past. It's our expectation that, you know, like other parts of Title V, the Board's going to carry out its permitting duties. And, you know, the Department, you know, in the absence of the Board of Health's action does have the authority to enforce Title V. So if you're not enforcing Title V with property owners, we have the authority to commit and issue orders. We typically have larger penalties for noncompliance than a local board of health does. It's not something we like to do or want to do, so I think it's in the best interest of property owners to work with the Board of Health and comply with the requirements of Title V. You know, while, while I can't speculate, I mean, the practice has been and our anticipation is, we're going to help and work with boards of health in developing compliance strategies. So as you find out what challenges are, we want to know, you know, what we can do to assist in helping you meet your responsibilities as the primary enforcement. But, you know, we do have that role that hangs over, I think, more the property owner than the Board of Health. I mean, it really is the property owner's responsibility there in terms of compliance with Title V. You know, there are watershed requirements that, you know, we need to be mindful of. And I think the other thing, you know, to keep in mind here is that if people aren't, if the Board of Health isn't enforcing it, or individuals aren't complying with it, it's only moving further from your targets for watershed improvements and nitrogen reduction. So, you know, I think ensuring compliance has a lot of benefits for the town, although admittedly, it, you know, could be challenging in some instances.
Thank you. Any comments on that response from the Board? Okay. See, after July 7, 2030, is enforcement, is the enforcement event based upon transfer or increase in flow or blanket enforcement? Any systems not documented in compliance would be subject to penalties?
Yeah, so after July 7, 2030, there's no exemption for a watershed permit. Systems that haven't been upgraded will not be compliant with Title V. So, you know, if you do have an approved watershed permit, the Title V requirements are suspended in accordance with the Title V regs that is 15.215. But, you know, once July 7th comes, if there's not a watershed permit, it's noncompliant, the system.
Okay. Satisfied? Ready for that? Question?
So, so is the enforcement after 2030, right, is that like it is now? You know, I don't want to assume that it's the same, but Title V now in a non-nitrogen-sensitive area is event-based. If you transfer your property, if you increase your flow, or if your system fails. So after 20, so we have cesspools in the Town of Bourne that are not enforced because the property hasn't transferred, hasn't increased their flow, and, you know, technically, they're not at failure, even though they should be at failure. So in 2030, there's a lot of people panicked that have Title V systems, and they're panicked that in 2030, you know, something's going to happen that could subject them to penalties if they haven't upgraded their system. So that's the question. Could they be subject to penalties after 2030 without an event?
I want to get back to the Board on that one. I want to be sure with counsel on that one, just so I don't give you a misstep there. I'd rather follow up with your Chair than make a misstatement here, because I recognize how important this is for individuals, and I just want to make sure with counsel that my understanding is correct before I say something. I think it would be noncompliant, but I don't want to say what the triggers would be or when you take action.
Do you have more?
Well, so it would be noncompliant, and DEP isn't sure what the enforcement is going to be.
I want to make sure on that before I respond. So I will get back to that now.
But does this question, MJ, referencing those non-NSA? Or are you referencing all?
It's only, it's, all of these questions are only NSA's. They don't apply to any place that's not a nitrogen-sensitive area.
I just want people to understand that, because, you know.
Right.
That, that's what we're referencing.
Not that currently or becomes a nitrogen-sensitive area, because we have a couple that are in the works.
Right. Sure. Okay. Thank you for that. So one more on that section. Without a watershed permit, can the Bourne Board of Health issue waivers for noncompliant Title V systems in an NSA after July 7, 2030?
So Title V, you know, establishes minimum requirements for systems, and I guess the Board of Health understands it has, you know, waived certain provisions in the past for various reasons. It doesn't remove the authority of the Board of Health to issue waivers, but it does, you know, move you further from meeting your nitrogen reduction requirements as you waive these provisions. So there's a consequence that comes with that as well. I think we also be, if you waived everyone that came in, I think that, you know, that raises eyebrows as well. I think, you know, waivers are relatively limited in number, but there might be some instance where, you know, the facts warrant one. I just don't have a hypothetical of one at the moment.
Okay. Any comments from Board questions, thoughts? Okay. Moving on, we're getting down there. We appreciate your time. We're getting close.
No.
So five, what is the town's enforcement responsibility for Title V in a nitrogen-sensitive area with a watershed permit?
So, as I said, you're primarily responsible party for Title V, including IA systems, and it would in part be determined by your watershed permit in terms of how you're achieving these things. So really, the permit begins to dictate what, how it interacts with Title V. So, you know, it may be that, you know, we're not doing anything, and therefore, you're straight Title V. There may be other provisions that would result in some offsets or some other work that you do that makes some change to what the would typically be the Title V responsibility.
Okay. Any comments on that? Questions? Okay. So A, from that same, that same comment. If the town decides to continue the use of best available nitrogen-reducing technology, the ANRT septic systems, as the preferred CWMP alternative, what are the penalties to the town if the goals outlined in the watershed permit are not met?
So, you know, as everybody I think is aware, the watershed permits are new. We haven't had to address a failure to meet the goals. That being said, the goal's to improve the watersheds. It's established that the town has the ability to request reasonable kind of modifications given circumstances, and it really is an adaptive management process and allows proposed changes. If something isn't working, and there's a way to deal with shortcomings in another manner, then, you know, we're open to whatever you're interested in proposing, we would consider and work with you to try and come up with strategies.
Okay. So same, same, same question underneath. So B is if the town decides to use sewer-ing options and there are permitting or other delays, what are the penalties to the town if the goals outlined in the watershed permit are not met?
So, you know, again, we haven't had to deal with that, but what I can say is historically, the Department's been very understanding in various settings when somebody has been unable to achieve a permit goal, but there's been good faith efforts. And I think where we're seeing good faith efforts by permitees and, you know, progress towards improving the watershed, we would be open to, you know, requests for modifications, extensions of time that are reasonable. You know, the goal is to work with you, not to penalize you.
Okay, we're getting there. Six. So regional sewer-ing options with Wareham, Joint Base Cape Cod, and Falmouth. Regional sewer-ing options with Wareham, Joint Base Cape Cod, and Falmouth create some financial challenges due to regulations that limit the use of SRF and thus access to the CWI WMP funds. If these options are pursued, are DEP and SRF willing to work with the towns with the nitrogen-sensitive areas to upgrade legislation to facilitate these options, regional options?
It's to a lot of different areas there. So historically, we've worked with communities where SRF challenges have been identified to see what we can do there. I can't speak as the legislative in terms of funding, in terms of statutory changes that might be there. You know, that's beyond our purview, but, you know, I think we, you know, the expectation is we'll continue to work with you to try and find funding sources, financial strategies. But, you know, we are constrained in part by the SRF regulations requirements. You know, we have, when challenges are brought to us, we bring them up, we raise them, but ultimately, you know, it's not my staff that makes those changes. We have to go to the trust and propose changes happen there.
Sure, thank you. SRF, for those who may not know, state revolving funds, just so we, I'm clear on that. Okay. Moving on, let's see. So seven, if the town applies for a watershed permit, will the town assume any obligation regarding the existing private dispute between Bayview Campground and the Buzzes Bay Coalition?
So it's, the town is the one that's responsible to establish a plan to meet the TMDL and maintain a similar capacity in the systems. You know, you select strategy. That being said, I don't necessarily see our role as the one responsible for mediating disputes between a watershed association and a private individual. You know, we do have enforcement authority that I think historically we've used to assist towns in challenges with individual properties. And, you know, we, you know, clearly, various associations, and I don't want to just say Buzzes Bay Coalition, but various associations, watersheds, come to us with concerns. You know, we have our responsibilities, we listen to them, and, you know, often we have similar goals, but perhaps not the same strategies to get there. And here, we're looking at the town's strategy and the town's plan, and, you know, would be looking to support the town where it has a challenging property.
Okay. Does that help with that question? Yes. Thank you for that answer. Okay. So can Bourne's counsel review any settlement agreements between the Commonwealth and the Conservation Law Foundation or any interest groups, any other interest groups, that lead to the development of the watershed permit option being developed?
So insofar as there's public documents, we will provide them. I can't speak specifically to these. I reached out, I just haven't gotten any answer yet. So, you know, I'll look at 14 as another follow-up question. I think it's six and 14 I owe you follow-up on. But insofar as there's public records, you know, we would provide them. You know, I think typically, things with us are public records. You know, perhaps something not negotiation, but typically, when there's a resolution, it becomes a public record. So, you know, that's what I can say on that at this point. I just don't have an answer.
Okay. Follow-ups, anyone? Will DEP participate in public meetings and discussions to develop the watershed permit? Or will the permit be developed in closed meetings with only town staff and consultants representing Bourne?
So it's, it's the town really that dictates the process and conducts the needs assessment and develops the permit based on input from your constituents' residents. We don't choose the strategy and, you know, but, you know, we are available to provide technical assistance, help with interpreting regulations when you've got questions, doing informal review of things like APIS submittals and things like that, and providing feedback on drafts before you get to a complete application. So, you know, we typically don't do these things in a broad public meeting. It tends to be, you know, we're working with a consultant and, you know, whether it be a, you know, a representative of a group or, you know, a chair of a committee or something like that, or, you know, typically less than a four is what we typically end up working with on these. But, you know, we are available to provide that technical assistance and interpretation on regs, as well as the feedback on drafts and things like that.
Okay. Anyone? We're good? I wanted to just kind of keep moving on, just so that we, I know we're getting down there on our time, and I know you have a hard stop at 3:30. What types of studies and engineering reports must be done as part of the watershed permit application?
So it's, it's going to vary from town to town. Typically, I would suggest starting with what reports and studies have already been done. If you've gotten NEPA comments, and then there's a permit application list for watershed permits, and I think those are good places to start in terms of what you should be looking at for studies and engineering reports. And, you know, if, before you get too far down the road, happy to have discussions with you in terms of what you're thinking.
Okay, I think we've got time for one more, I think, here, so.
I have a few extra minutes, I'll push my other.
Okay, I appreciate it. We're getting there.
I'm sorry, it's just I had an appointment, I couldn't move.
I understand, we understand. Okay, so can the town withdraw their application for a watershed permit before a permit is issued?
Yes. So it's, it's clear in the regulations that you're able to withdraw it, but keep in mind that to the extent there was a suspension of the IA requirements in Title V, that would end when you withdraw. So that's the consequence for withdrawing if you start down the road.
Okay. Comments, questions? No? Okay. What fines, penalties, enforcement will the town face if we are unable to comply with the terms of the watershed permit?
Yeah. So as I said before, we have, it's new, we haven't had to deal with this before, so I can't point to something having happened. Frankly, our expectation is that, you know, if the town is able, we're going to work on you in good faith, and we're not going to have to get there. And I don't want to, I don't want to speculate. I mean, the goal is to improve the watershed, and, you know, we want to put our efforts and have you put your efforts and your money there rather than in the general coffers. You know, it is an iterative process. We expect that you may need to amend or do something as part of this iterative process over time as you're moving forward. You know, we want to see that nitrogen reduction. That being said, you know, you always have that specter of, is there a third party in the absence of mass DEP that tries to take, take an action under, I think it's Chapter 214, Section 7A, which authorizes third parties to seek equitable or declaratory relief for environmental damage caused by violation of a statute or regulation? So, you know, that's out there, and I can't speak as to what somebody there might want to do, but our goal is to try and work with towns, you know, that are working in good faith to just keep this moving.
Thank you. Okay. Will the town be assuming the risk of being sued by private individuals or interest groups if there is a dispute about whether or not we are in compliance with the terms of the watershed permit?
I can't control what a third party does, and there is a statutory piece there. You know, that being said, I think if we think you're in good faith and moving forward, I think there's weight that that carries with these third-party groups that typically will give us notice before they tend to file a suit. So there's a notice comes to us, you know, my experience has been, there's a conversation at that point. Sometimes they're not aware of everything that's going on, and so, you know, we're not mediating, but we're, you know, trying to at least advise third parties as to, you know, where we think this process is, particularly if the town's been working in good faith.
Perfect. Any comments, questions? Okay. If the town enters, 14, if the town enters into a watershed permit, will the town be assuming responsibility for enforcing the terms of the permit on private property owners?
So it's the town's decision on how to implement your strategies and achieve the needed reductions to comply with the TMDL. This may, in many cases, involve obligations on private property owners, whether it be IA systems or other approaches. You know, I think, take a look at some of the, I think it's the Barnstable County Septic Utility Program. Some towns are looking at an IA program like a utility and, you know, taking on some of the O and M and other fees that, you know, may make it more achievable under, you know, to achieve your strategies. So, you know, I would, I would suggest taking a look at some of those and, you know, that may be helpful in sort of developing your strategies that may make it easier on individual property owners and hopefully easier on you as well.
Thank you. Okay. 15. Will there be any dedicated funding from the state that comes with entering into a watershed permit? Non-competitive discretionary grants? Question mark.
Yeah, I, I can't say whether there will or won't be. I mean, typically, I think as, you know, the people who've done SRF funding have seen there are points given for matters of priority, whether it be, you know, PFAS and drinking water or other rules. So I think historically, the department has tried to help communities that are trying to achieve goals that are high priority for the department, for the state, by having that there. You know, ideally, there's, I don't want to speculate on funding because that, you know, is largely legislative comes to us.
Understood. Okay. Final, final question for you. The NEPA EENF certificate requires that the town, the town, to study a potential watershed permit, pages six and seven. Does this mean that the town must complete a draft EIR and final EIR before a watershed permit can be issued?
So I think that specific question would have to go to NEPA, but I think we would look at the process helping form your basis for the watershed management plan and your watershed permit application. So I think if you have to do it, I think there's a value that comes in your process, but I would, I would talk to NEPA in terms of what they would specifically require.
Okay. So that was all the questions on the comment period. Does the board have any further comments on, on DEP before he has to log off?
Thank you very much for taking the time to come. I think it's very helpful for the whole board to hear the answers and the public to hear the answers, because we all have questions, and your answers were very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is very technical, we know, and complicated, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you, sir.
Okay. No? All right, then, again, follow-up with, you know, either Drew or myself. If you've got any questions, I noted six and 14, I think, were the, at least in the order I had the questions, and so I owe you two answers. And I will follow up on those in the next couple of days.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to go back up and start, and what I want to do now is I think it's a really good time for us to start hearing from the public. So I'd like to set up some time here for our residents to come to the mic. Please introduce yourself and your village, where you live, and make your comments. So what we're going to try to do, we obviously know there's a lot of you here, and a lot of you have the sort of the same thing you want to say, so we'll hear a few of you. Once we get real redundant, maybe we'll save the comments for people that may have something new to say, just so that we can get through it and get to the rest of our items on the agenda. But I don't know who wants to start. You have three minutes, public comment? I mean, the comments would be? Yeah, sir, come right up.
Hi, my name's Robert Center. I live at 37 Sheikah Drive in Monument Beach. I guess, listening to everything with DEP, it makes me wonder, like, the questions that were being asked don't present like they're from the crowd of people that are here to go ahead and try and figure out what's going on. It sounds like it was more of either the Select Board or Natural Resources or the consultants that were part of those questions, because I think the question, biggest question I have is to find out, why are we just now asking those questions? Like, the bell's ready to ring for us to be able to do something, and we're just now asking questions without knowing what consequences for not taking action are going to go ahead and be. That, to me, just seems like, how can you, I feel like it's getting shoved down our throats that we got to accept whatever decision the Select Board makes at this point, because there's no chance of being able to buy us more time. And that just, it, that doesn't feel like it's in the best interest for the population, if that's the way the Select Board wants to operate, is to kick the can down the road, kick the can down the road, and then when it's, when it's the last minute, we'll go ahead and make a decision, and then you're just stuck with it. Like, we're the only town on the Cape to go ahead and not sign the NOI. What does BORN think it knows better than everyone else? I mean, pool your resources with the other towns and see why they didn't, why they signed the NOI, and why do we think that we know better than everyone else? All the water from our town, Mashpee, Falmouth, all those other towns, they all lead into the same pool. So one person thinking he's going to do something different than everyone else, I don't see that as going to be effectively making a change.
Okay. Do, does the board want to comment? Are we allowed to comment on that, correct? We can say?
It's an agenda.
You can answer the question.
Yeah, if somebody wants to ask, I figure I'll go around first. If MJ wants to respond, we can let the board respond if you choose.
The only thing I would say is, we started this process for the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan four or five years ago. We've been working on it, we've been asking questions. In the middle of that process, the regulations for Title V changed, and so we're trying to grapple with what the regulations are and how BORN's going to deal with it. And I would say that from the administrative side, there have been concerns about filing a watershed permit by creating more liability on the town. And I think it's important for the Select Board to understand whether going for a watershed permit is in the best interest of the town, or whether it's going to create more liability for the town. So we're in a process. I would say for myself, the conclusion that I have come to on, is my view, and you heard it from DEP today, that establishing a watershed permit means the town is going to make a good faith effort to improve the water quality in the town, that we're going to take positive action to do so as a town, and that we're going to monitor that action, and we're going to make sure that it's working so that we fulfill the mission of the Board of Selectmen to create a good environment for our coast and our people. So my feeling at this time is that we need to file the notice of intent for the watershed permit. We need to establish a plan that we have control of, and we need to start working on that plan. And that's where I am, and it took us a long time to get here, but I think if we do what we're supposed to do, what we do, what we can do now, then we'll be making good progress. And I think this is wonderful that we have all these people here. We have had numerous meetings on this issue and not a lot of public participation, so I am very glad and very happy to see the public engaged in this issue.
That was the first comment I made, as I said. I would like to see what the attendance was of the past meetings to see if it took somebody posting something on Facebook to go ahead and create a presence in the meetings, so.
Over the last four to five years, you could put on both your hands, no more than 10 people probably total over the last four or five years of the general public in the room, but then when Amy and Greg put the discussion on social media, it, you know, it created what we have here today.
Right.
Which I love. You know, we want to hear from you.
Unfortunately, you probably would have loved it, you know.
Earlier.
Couple of years ago.
But the fact that you're here now is all, and I am in concurrence with MJ and her assessment, I feel that we do need to go forward with filing a notice of intent for watershed permits.
I mean, it's the only way to control the narrative. I mean, pretty much, you have the time to go ahead and do it the right way instead of just having to take and jump in and not know what you're supposed to be doing.
All right, we'll give Emma a rare chance to speak and the rest of the board.
We kind of do know what we're doing.
I know, but I mean.
There is a very extensive 280-page document that has.
But it sounds like DEP doesn't even know necessarily what is being done.
Well, the curve ball was this Title V curve ball, right? And implementing this. And that's so new that they don't have the answers because they don't have the experience yet with any community who's in default of these Title V regulations or in default of their watershed permits and what they filed for and their strategies. It just hasn't happened yet. So the newness of it, like, I think it's important for people to understand that we don't just get time with a watershed permit. We get a lot of responsibility and liability as a community with increased costs that are in excess of if we're searing or, you know, having to meet all these regulations of hundreds of millions of dollars.
Right.
Right? To try to navigate that and, because ideally, right, we want the best outcome for the least amount of money. That's the goal.
Oh, definitely.
That's the goal. And we can apply for this time.
That doesn't happen in public works, unfortunately.
Right. And we can apply for this time, but I think what people need to understand as well as, over a 20-year period of time, there is a cost associated with people who still have to do IA systems, people who still have to do, you know, whether the decision is to, one of the decisions is to sewer Finney's Harbor, that's been in the draft recommended plan. There is, like, we have to address those nitrogen-loading areas in the first five years of the plan, the next five years of the plan, the next five, right, over a 20-year period. So there is still going to be a profound impacting cost on the, on the town. So what do you weigh? Do you, how, how do you weigh that cost? And that's why it's taken us a long time to really, truly understand watershed permit with the individual homeowner, right?
Right.
Title V regulations, just status quo, because we're still, there still has to be a plan, there still has to be a timeframe. Homeowners are still going to have to deal with the first five years, the first, like, we have to do it that way.
Right.
So, yeah, time is important, having the time to do it and to do it effectively is really important. But I think it's important to also understand that it's going to be an astronomical task, an astronomical cost for this community, in addition to the liability that a watershed permit puts, puts us in. So I've gone back and forth, I honestly, I, like. So I've, I've gone back and forth, I honestly, I, I, like, feel for you. Like, I don't want to spend that money either, you know? I mean, that's a lot of money to spend on a homeowner in the next five years. I mean, it's, it's really difficult. But know that it's going to cost a lot of money.
Well, definitely.
Even over the next five years and 10 years and this impact is, is, is great. It's great. But this comprehensive plan, there's two, like I said, the 280-page document speaks volumes to all the scientific data and, and that, you know, through this process that we have with, with what's happening in our community. And it is our responsibility, okay? It's, it's a town effort. Whether you live 50 feet from the water or 50,000 feet from the water, we're in this as a community, right? And I think that's important to understand because it's comprehensive. Regardless of whether you have those nitrogen loading, if you live in a nitrogen loading area or if you don't, we still have to address. Every waterway is nitrogen sensitive. There's more, two of them are TMDLs, right? So, when you think about it on a large scale, we have 3,900 systems that we have to change in order to meet our nitrogen loading data, right? Reduction. 3,900 systems across the town. So do the math, 3,900 divided by 20 years, right?
Yeah.
Is, what, 195, I think? Something like that. 195 times the average cost of a system, whether you have to upgrade new systems, three-bedroom home, new system is 130.
Right.
Before you even get out of the ground, right? Upgrades can range depending, because they have to be engineer-specific to your property, 20,000, 50,000, right around there. So when you do the math, how much is that per year, right?
And the big variable, I think, too, is the use of the term best, you know, best practices or what, how.
Available, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
Best available nitrogen-reducing.
Right, well, but that's not best available within reason. It's best available. So, if somebody says, I have this new system, but it costs $100,000, how, are we in violation for not putting in that $100,000 system when every other system's 80 and saw 60 or 30?
Depends on your current system. If your system fails, you have to go with a state mandated approved system. Not all systems, right?
Right.
We have that technology, not all of them have been approved. So you can only imagine what's happening with that market, knowing that I'm the installer and my system's ones that the state approved.
Right.
Guess what? Now, hmm, the cost is here because, it is. You know, it's business, right?
Exactly. And that's what I think's going to happen with it.
I'm not a septic installer. I'm just saying. You know? So, yeah, I mean, that's what we've been grappling with. And we want to make the decision that's best for the community. And it's hard to look out and get all the emails. I know the burden. I know the burden. But don't think that we're kicking the can down the road or you might not be alive 20 years from now. Or you might not own that home 20 years from now because you'll have to deal with it.
The perception is the can's been kicked down the road. I'm not saying that's not the case. No, not by you, but by everyone else. When we're hearing, like, questions get asked that we would have thought the answers would have been had years ago, like, to the DEP, like, that just strikes you more like, why weren't the, why are these questions getting asked when we should have already known the answers?
Well, we had that whole MIPA filing and that's what kind of snowballed the whole, we need to get DEP in here and get them to answer some questions.
Sure, sure. So I'm going to give Gina a chance to respond if she's, thank you.
I was a little, you should have just went.
It's okay. I want her to finish. I mean, I think it's important that you, I think it's important that residents here, so if Gina has to comment or.
Being newer to the board, I was, I was having to, I had to catch up a bit and I did go back and look at some of the old meetings and I think it's been bantered about since 2008, talking about comprehensive practices. But I did watch the presentation in 2022. I think that was not on Zoom, but it was on Community TV after. Nobody, nobody came, I, 2002, when the plan was presented, it was not on Zoom, it was in person. I don't think anyone was in the audience. But even in watching all that past history and listening and even going through discussions that I took part in last May and last June, the things that were changed with Title V really did steer a lot of those conversations that took place in the last year. But what, what, you know, it's, it's kind of like, it made me feel like you almost had to start over again with some concepts, but how we're going to handle and how we're going to approach and how do you even come up with an answer if you don't know what you're working with, what you're, what, what you're going to face with DEP in the end? So, so, yeah, it's, it's been a long time and it's, we're glad that you're here and I read every letter that came through and all the comments.
Anyone can hear you now.
Sorry.
I'll speak up, I'll speak loud if you can hear me. I mean, I think.
Try, sorry.
Can you hear me okay back in the back?
Yes.
All right. So I'm just going to add very briefly because my, my associate said, I think, said it all pretty well. I mean, I think for me, it's, you know, I look at this whole thing and it's so technical and I'm fairly, I mean, kind of green in a way. I've been on the board one term. I'm just starting, you know, as chair today is my first meeting, so I appreciate your, your patience. But I think for me, it's just, I look at it and it feels to me like, you know, the town is being pushed into a watershed permit for regulations that the state created. You know, we have to remember, these Title V regulations, we didn't make them. The, the town didn't. So, we're being pushed into a watershed permit, in my opinion, that is creating risk that we're not really sure about. And because we, even with the watershed permit, it does not alleviate all of our residents from having to upgrade their systems. It's still going to have to be done. And without a CWMP that is final and in place, we're, we're taking huge risk, science, from, I feel like going into this NOI when we don't really know what it's, what it means. And it's still going to cost, the residents are still going to have to upgrade. It does, we, we can't stop that part, that's the state's regulation. So how do we, you know, what decisions do we make? How do we do it? Sure, it buys some more time, but we don't have 20 years to upgrade. We need to do this work. Before 20 years, right?
Do we know what not signing the NOI will do?
You know, not signing it? Well, I mean, that's a loaded question as well.
So, I mean.
But it, it could be a bigger risk doing so. So it's so hard and it's so technical and there's just a lot to it. So that's my comment, you know? It's like, the, the, our Board of Health is meant to foster compliance. They're not the people who actually have to enforce it. That's DEP's job. With this situation, we file an NOI, it's on us. DEP goes, bye, you guys are good. It's your responsibility now. Have a good day with that. That's why, and the other watersheds that have filed the NOIs, they already have their CWMPs, their searing plans and all of their stuff in place. That's why they filed there so easily. We don't yet. We're still working on ours. So we could be creating a risk for our people more so than we, we, we know about. As you could hear from DEP, they didn't have answers to everything. So that's where I'm at. I think, you know, we, I too want to do what's best for our residents. I don't live in one of those areas, but it's real close, it could change tomorrow. They could push the map over and I'm also affected. I want to see our residents, protect them in any way we can. These sewers are expensive, I get it. But I'm just really worried about those unknowns and sort of the state pressuring us to, forcing us into a watershed permit when we don't even know what that means. So that's my, that's my thoughts there. So thank you for your questions.
If you do want to better understand the watershed permit, you can go to CMR, the 314, it's Section 21. The watershed permit regulations. Oh, okay.
Can you repeat that?
So it's the 314 CMR, it's Section 21. 314 CMR is the Division of Water Pollution and that particular shit, section is relative to watershed permits.
Okay, come on, sir, you said, say your name and your village, thank you.
Yep, Rich Signal. My wife Libby and I, just off County Road, right on the marsh, on the Back River Marsh where we see the green Algo-Goo mats that are right there right now. So I was actually really happy to hear that we were going to, that at least some of us would like to pursue the NOI. As was said by our previous speaker, every other town has decided that this is a good thing to not just put it on the individual homeowner, but have the town take some responsibility. And my question is, if we do decide to do the NOI, do we have, you know, how hard is it to do the NOI by the deadline of July 7th? Is, do we have the resources and time to do it? Is it an onerous process or is it something pretty simple?
So we can, I can answer that if, unless somebody else wants to take it. So we, we can, we can submit the, the letter of intent to file the watershed permit and the application we can work on as we go. We do not have to have the application ready in order to, to submit the NOI.
Right.
Which is a good thing. So we do have time, yes.
The application, the application deadline is July of 2030.
Right.
The notice of intent is July.
Right, but we have, but we have, the, the notice of intent is not an onerous process, right?
No.
No. Nope, it's a letter of intent.
Thank you, sir.
I don't see anybody on Zoom with a hand up, so.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Peter Valeri from Valeri Construction, as some of you may know. I've been, I'm an installer and excavation contractor. We've been in the business for 40, we've been in the business for 40 years. I just take a little bit of backdoorness to your, Ann Marie, I guess. It's not the septic installers that are driving the cost of this up. There's three manufacturers now.
That's not what I meant, I'm sorry if you would move to that.
But it's the way it came out, just so the people know.
It was, I'm sorry, no, the manufacturer.
There's only three manufacturers that are approved under this NOI, whatever you want to call it, there's too many letters involved.
Yeah, I know.
I'm technology challenged. Two of them, to buy them, sitting in the factory, are roughly $15,000 by the time you put taxes on it. The third one that some of these towns are pushing is $32,000 or $33,000 just to buy it. And they're six months out.
Right.
So, along with that comes the electrical work that needs to be done, the maintenance fees that need to be done with that, the testing that is either quarterly or whatever it is, and it all adds up in the thousands. Not to mention the installation that has to happen, the putting the yards all back together again, the engineering, I see Zach here for the fracking engineering, that has to go along with it to design these. They range anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000, depending on what you're up against, depending on what the perk test says. When you do these systems, you're not going to go in and just take this tank, drop it in the ground and hook it up and go. Doesn't happen as much as you want to do. I think filing for that permit, after especially listening to what the DEP says, is a mistake not doing it. Because you can withdraw that. 30 years from now, what's the technology going to be? Six or eight, $10,000? We've got a unit, we can drop in an existing septic tank and be done. You know, kicking the can down the road isn't the best way or the best thing to do all the time. But in this particular case, maybe it is a little bit. It's going to mean that the Selectmen have to step up. There's going to be a lot more meetings. There's going to be a lot more time involved. And yeah, it's going to be painful for the paperwork and it's going to be painful for the town to absorb the expense. But over time, if you've got, how many septic's in the town of Bourne totally? Pick that number, it's giant. If they're all going to be affected at one time or another and start dividing that cost out, it's really not that bad. I think it's really something that you look at, signing up for that and getting it done. What else? And plus, to add on to that, they're offering, or nobody is, any financing for the homeowners. What do you do for a homeowner that's barely holding on now, that's working two jobs and doesn't have the money to put one of these in? You know, you start, county has loan programs, it is available. Whether it's going to be there throughout this term, it's another $4, $5, $6, $700 a month. Testing is between $1,000 and $2,000 a month. You've got $75 a month to run these blowers and all that. And the poor homeowner that's barely holding on, how many houses are we going to lose? I know you're starting that whole Clay Pond Road area is the first undertaking and it's hard for people to believe that they live 20 or 40 feet above groundwater and they say, it's not us, but it's the ground flow from the base where they got all this, you know, drawings from. But I just think the town needs to look at signing this and kind of protecting the people. It's just the way it has to be. And I know it's going to be painful, but, and then the other part of this is, I think some of these meetings should be at night. Not at 3:00 in the afternoon when homeowners.
They were, they usually are. All of the other ones were.
In the same token, unless the homeowners go to the Selectmen's office and read what the agenda is, they never know it. This is all because of Facebook and a couple of posts and somebody said they're going to spend $40,000, so everybody's here. And that's great, they should be here. But if you said it was at 6:30 at night, granted, everybody's going to come, but at least you would get more participation and more ideas of what maybe people have to think. But it needs to be at night, not in the middle of the day because the people that are most affected by are at work trying to make their payments.
Yes.
And that's the way it is.
Thank you. I think we've.
Traditionally with workshops, we have our workshops in the afternoon. Because this is considered a workshop, it's actually not a Select Board meeting. So what happens here becomes an agenda item at our evening meetings. That's the whole purpose. We get, like, this is the grinding the work out and then bring it to our evening meetings so that we can have more public participation. That's how.
And that's fine, but it needs to be, whether it's the Bourne Residence Page or Facebook or whatever, something that a lot more people see other than the agenda that's posted on the wall.
Yeah.
At the Town Hall.
And I just want to apologize again, I meant no disrespect to you as an installer or, or say, I meant the technology.
And I didn't take it that way, I wanted it straightened out because.
I meant the technology.
Every day we get price increases on everything, it goes up by the day, it's crazy.
Yeah, no, I meant the technology itself, the manufacturing.
Right.
That's, that's what's getting out of control.
Okay, that's it.
And I think additionally, sometimes, you know, we have to rely on, we had to have DEP here and they, you know, they tell us when they can be here.
And they don't tell you anything. That was the biggest bunch of kick the can down the road you ever heard in your life. It wasn't one answer that we already didn't know or understand that they were going to say. And I understand that's a hard area to be in. Katie knows, we've been through this hours and hours and hours. When you don't have an answer and, and I get phone calls three times a week about what we should do. How do we tell people what to do when we don't have any guidance? It's not Katie guidance, it's, it's the whole realm of things. And we're still putting systems in and they're asking questions, should I put D-Nite in or should I not? And there's still no answer. It, it's very hard on the homeowners and they need to have some progression.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think it's, you know, as we said, it's, 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 it's difficult and.
Melissa? Can I, just procedurally, we do.
Is there anybody monitoring Zoom to answer the question on Zoom?
Yes, hold on one moment, we have, we're doing that right next. I'm sorry, we were kind of taking the people in the room and we'll reach out to the Zoom room. Yes, we do have, the spice chair is monitoring.
Melissa, is no hand, I don't see a hand. Procedurally.
Yes.
Okay? We have about 20 people in the lobby.
Yes.
So if you can ask, if, once people have spoken, if they can make space for people to come in
Come in, sure.
From the lobby. And for Zoom, the chat is not monitored and people need to please raise their hands.
They have to raise a hand, I don't see any hand raising.
I don't see hands either, so that's why I wasn't, I didn't see any up there.
I'm, I'm watching.
Okay, so if there's anyone else that wants to come to the mic, you want to? Yeah, this, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Did you even tell people how to raise their hands?
Yeah, I mean, just explain to the people at home how to do it.
There's six comments on the chat.
We're not monitoring the chat, we're not monitoring the chat.
Nobody knows how to, to do the, raise the hand.
Go to the bottom of the screen and hit react.
Go to react.
Go to the bottom of the screen and hit react. The little, a hand and it'll say raise hand.
It's right next to the, it's right next to the mute button, actually. It's to the right. It's right next to the chat, actually.
Yeah, we can't monitor the chat.
We're sorry. All right, go ahead, Ms. Thomas.
Good afternoon, Bob Dwyer from Pecassett. Just a couple of quick comments. The first gentleman spoke and he pointed out that the other 13 towns on the Cape who have nitrogen-sensitive areas have all fired, filed for one kind of watershed permit or another. So this is a well-trod path. They've had a lot of interactions with DEP so far in the early stages of this. And I think this would be a perfect opportunity for the WAC or the consultant or somebody else to do kind of a bench, a benchmarking with each of these towns to find out, okay, what are the best practices? What are the pitfalls? Maybe not for the searing areas, although we do have, you do have a proposed sewer area for Finney's Harbor. And, and just get their experience and find out what their traps are, find out what, what was a streamlined watershed permit with an area that was primarily going to be IA systems as opposed to searing.[1761.62] Again, the experience is out there. It's very early in the stages, but we ought to take advantage of it. And the second, just for clarification again, the July 7th deadline only applies to the two watersheds that have TMDLs that have been declared nitrogen sensitive areas. And they have a, they're going to have a five-year clock. Either for producing a watershed permit application or for turning the whole thing over to the state. But the other watersheds that have been identified, I think they're called Tier 2. Pecassett River, Pecassett Harbor, and I think there are a couple of other small ones. Those do not have TMDLs yet. They have a guess at a target of a 25% reduction. But there's no clock operating on them until the TMDLs are submitted to the state, approved by the state, approved by EPA, and then the state will declare those as nitrogen sensitive areas. And then in my understanding in, there is a two-year, I won't call it a waiting period, but there's a, a two-year initial period followed by the five-year either implementation by the state or a filing of a watershed permit.
The two years is already gone. We're only the five years now.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Okay, well, eliminate that. So, but for those other watersheds, the clock has not started operating yet. So there's a chance here to learn from the experience of putting watershed permits in for the two watersheds that are already NSA's, learn from that, and then when the TMDLs are filed for those other two, based on that experience, then modify that. Just looking at the arithmetic, the Pecassett Harbor, I have to think about this, is, and the Pecassett River are about three-quarters of all of the homes that are going to have to be done. So they're, they're waiting in the wings onto Tier 2, but the clock will be operating only when the NSA is declared. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Melissa, can you ask if someone on Zoom who wants to speak could come off mute?
Okay, yes. If you're on Zoom and you would like to speak and cannot find your hand, the hand icon, you could certainly unmute. Is there Rachel? I can't really read. Rachel Greenfield, I think she wanted to speak.
I can read you the comments in chat if you would like to hear them.
We can't do that.
We can't, I'm sorry.
Okay, there's quite a few of them. So there's a Michelle White, a Julie DeTeo, David O'Connell, Mark LaFlore, a Clowman, a Rick York.
Do, do we print those later or not?
They need, they need to raise.
Sorry, they're going to need to raise their hand and speak them out.
Or come off mute.
Or come off mute, please.
We, we can't use the chat because of the open meeting law.
Okay, well, my, my comment is, it seems to me, the gentleman that just spoke, I don't know his name, seems to make the most sense. And it also seems to me that Mr. Valeri knows what he's talking about. He's been doing septic for 40 years and that definitely if there's only three providers, the costs are outrageous, that filing the permit, if that's going to have better technology and additional people that are going to be able to help out with this, that we're going to learn a lot more and it seems to make a lot of sense to me.
Thank you, Rachel. Yeah, I mean, I think again, it's just, you know, we have to remember again that it does not alleviate the Title V regulations, just because we filed the NOI. I just want to keep stressing that. Okay, is there anyone else?
But it seems to me like if all of the towns on the Cape have done a lot more research, they're also well ahead with septic, town septic, that they've done a lot more research than whoever is doing this. I didn't know about this meeting until I saw it on social media and I feel that that's something lacking in this town, that we're not using that enough. And I'd be more than happy to participate and, and do a lot more. But this affects so many people in this town and the cost is so high that we need to find out as much information as possible and delay this potentially.
Thank you. Again, those towns that did file the NOIs already, already have full sewer-ing options and their, their plans are all finished and ours is not. So that is important, but go ahead, MJ.
I, I think it's really important because there've been comments about the NOI creating an obligation on the town. The NOI does not create an obligation on the town. It is the filing of the watershed permit that creates the obligation on the town. And if we file a notice of intent, we have five years.
I understand that. You don't have to educate me. I'm, I know.
We have five years to create our plan and we have five years to create the obligation based on what we think is the right answer. If we do not file the NOI, then we are not actively taking the responsibility for solving this problem. And we are, in fact, creating a situation where every single parcel that is developed in a watershed with a nitrogen-sensitive watershed is obligated to replace their septic system. And in our plan, and we haven't talked about our recommended plan because we haven't had time yet, but in our, in our recommended plan, there is a table for, without a watershed permit, and that table is completely inaccurate. Because without a watershed permit, it is not 285 parcels in Kalamet that must upgrade. It is 390 parcels in Kalamet. And in, in Finney's Harbor, it's not 486 parcels that potentially could be sewed. It's 1,145 developable parcels, which is about $50 million. And in Kalamet, it's $16 million. So without a watershed, without filing an NOI, if we file a comprehensive wastewater management plan without a watershed permit as part of the timeline, we are creating a much higher cost to the tech, to the homeowners in this town. And we are not taking on our responsibility for protecting the quality of water. The, the notice of intent is the settlement the DEP came to because the Conservation Law Foundation said that the towns on Cape Cod were not taking responsibility for water quality. And by not doing, filing a notice of intent and taking on our responsibility, we as a town are making, I think, a very big mistake because it is our responsibility as select board members and as people in this town to protect the water quality in our town. And I really feel.
Minds of those that have to pay all this money out.
We, everyone's going to have to pay.
I know that, I know that.
But what we should be paying for is the best solution, not, not.
We're not getting clear answers, like even Mr. Valeri was saying. Like, I was just told, okay, ours failed, 58 years old, that's okay. Oh, Mary Perry, 8080 Oak Pond Road, Monument Beach. My husband is Les Perry. Family's been around in Monument Beach for a very long time. That being said, I hope you will get that NOI passed because having to make up the mind of what to do, it can be very challenging when you're not getting clear and precise answers. So I was already, yeah, okay, let's clear out the, the septic's fine, I'm all on board, $24,000, we can handle that. So then B&amp;B's doing it out of sandwich. He came and he said, Mary, you're in the town of Bourne. You have to put in this NOI thing. Now your price is going to be about $44,000. Oh, okay. But they're not even sure. These, these pieces of machinery are very, they're very tricky. So now they're saying that they have to come twice a year to, and I have to pay $320 each time. But before I even sign the O and M, which, I want to ask you about that, I have to come up with $1,100 before I sign the actual contract. And to read the contract, and they say if something goes wrong, I have to pay for it. Well, I feel that the town should start picking up some of this, first get that NOI signed and start helping to relieve some of the burden of the cost that we are looking at. Because I'm retired, my husband is 81, he's not working. And, you know, we got rid of one car, so we're saving money on car insurance for crying out loud, which is what, 40 bucks a month? So now we're looking at a payment of about $250, $300 a month, even with the Aqua Fund. It's over 20 years. So I'm a little frustrated. But I'm glad that we were able to make the meeting and I hope y'all will put that NOI through. Because it is, it is, I think, keeping some people up at night. It's a little frustrating. I also want to know why, I hope, I think Falmouth does this, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, that fertilizers are not allowed used on lawns. And I know the green industry would have conniptions if we were to say to cut back on fertilizer use and the runoff of water into the waterways. And maybe that's already corrected, I don't know. But I don't think that us in our poop is giving all that much nitrogen problem to the water. I think we have to look at other sources of corrections also. It's just a concern of my mind. So thank you for listening to me. And I hope that you will pass that NOI. And thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Can we go to a Zoom speaker?
Yes, someone on Zoom. I see a hand up.
Sarah?
No, no. Ms. Clowman is first.
Okay.
Hi, Kelly Loughlin, 43 Spinnaker in Pecassett. My house does not fall under this, into this little green blob at this point in time. That doesn't mean it's going to change obviously, but I'm listening to a lot of the discussion about, you know, the sewer-ing and all these other towns on the Cape have sewer-ing in place and that's why they passed the NOI. And, and to me, I think this is a perfect explanation or a perfect time for the town of Bourne to start exploring sewer-ing, sewer-ing for, for the town of Bourne. I don't understand why that's not a topic of discussion now. Why isn't Bourne taking a look at putting sewer in for the residents that live in Bourne? You know, the residents that live underneath these, underneath that big green blob shouldn't be expected to, to be absorbing all of this cost just because it's going to cost so much money for this watershed application because now, you know, we're going to have to start looking at sewer. I understand it's a big cost, I get that. I, you know, no one's looking to, to come up with the, the money to put sewer in to cover the, you know, to cover all of the amount of money that it's going to cost to put sewer and to, to take care of this problem. But think about how much it's going to cost to upgrade your sewer, your septic system, whether you have a brand new septic that you've just put in or you have to upgrade to one of these fancy IA systems and then the amount of money that it's going to cost to keep that thing running. So I think it's just very short-sighted to say, no, we can't do this because it's going to cost too much money to, to explore the options. I think it's very short-sighted to expect a certain number of residents to carry all this, all this expense. Just my opinion, but don't forget, it may be a small amount now, but it could very easily turn into just about everybody Capeside.
Thank you. I'm going to give the board a moment to comment, Anne Marie.
Just a comment. We have, we are and have been looking at sewer for the past couple of years. And if you look at the draft recommended plan, we have a plan to source Finney's Harbor, which is in one, which has an NSA and is, you know, a nitrogen-sensitive area. So that is, there, there was also look at, looking at McGansett's critique harbor, also an NSA, and trying to navigate how best, if we could, sewer that area. But it's all in the draft recommended CWMP plan, all the, all of the data. It's a good read, in my opinion.
I had looked at that. I had seen that back about a year or so ago and, you know, but it does need to be explored to, you know, to get a good portion of the town on sewer. I know that down in Taylor's Point, they're on sewer. But, you know, and a good portion, you know, down on, you know, down that area is on sewer. But, you know, it's going to be looked at, especially Capeside, to get a lot of these houses on sewer. I know there's a massive expense in that. But, you know, if other towns on Cape have already, have already been looking into that, it's time for Bourne to be doing the same thing. And is it expensive? Of course it is. Do we want to pay it? Well, no one wants their taxes to go up. Especially, I'm, I'm retired, my husband's retired, so we don't want our taxes to go up any more than anyone else does. But I certainly don't want to have to put in a, you know, a $50,000 septic system or a $40,000 septic system or a $100,000 septic system. That's not in the budget either. So, I mean, there's, there's no easy answer to this. But there's going to be something that's going to be a little bit better than pushing it all up on a certain number of residents in the town.
Thank you. I mean, I think it's, again, it's, we're all going to end up paying for it somehow, right? It just may not be in the big lump sum, so it's, it's so complicated, but. Do we want to do another online?
No, why don't you go in the room and then we'll go back to Zoom.
Hi, Jennifer Oliver, Monument Beach Shore Drive. Question, why can't we just get agreement that we're going to put in the LOI? NOI, sorry. Letter of intent, whatever it is, notice of intent, why can't we just get agreement right now that at least we'll have another five years?
Well, this is, this is our, this is a workshop, so technically today we'll discuss it and then it will come back to the table.
So let's discuss. Why don't we go around each person?
And then we will vote at a different meeting. We will probably will not be voting on the same.
All right, we already know.
We could, yeah.
Can we just go around the table and find out?
If the board is ready to vote today, then we could. But it depends if people have other questions, still have more research to do, we'll have to see. But we still have to, July 7.
The NOI doesn't, there's no risk associated with that. We can pull it back. The town can pull it back. Sorry. The town can pull it back. So there should be no risk in just putting in that NOI. NOI, NOI, whatever it is.
NOI.
So I don't understand why we're having this discussion. Just file it and then that gives us more time.
Well, it's important to deliberate and hear everybody. We want to hear from everyone. That's really important.
Anybody here agree they should put this in?
We just want to make sure everybody has a voice. This is the process.
Okay, everybody, who agrees?
No, 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 I'm sorry. But this is the process and I, it might not be the process you like, but we do have an agenda. We do have other people who want to talk about things and speak. And when everybody is done with their opportunity to speak, we'll move to the next step.
There is no risk with the NOI, right?
Quite an agenda to get through as well.
There is no risk with the NOI, right, submitting that. So I don't see why we can't do that and then start the more detailed discussions.
Thank you, ma'am.
We hear you. We hear you. We're listening. We hear you.
I don't, I don't think you are.
So why is it not okay to pull the room?
Yeah, when it, when will the.
We're trying to get more comments.
We have to, we have to conduct the meeting. I mean, there is due process, this is a meeting, a workshop. We're trying to conduct it the best we can. We want to make sure people have opportunity, equal opportunity, if they have something to say, to be able to say it. We can't cut people short, so.
We have next person on.
Is Sarah.
Sarah, could, Sarah, you're, you're up. If you could unmute and state your name and village.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Whittington, also Spinnaker Lane, Pecassett. I actually have a question about something that the chair said a few minutes ago. You said that Title V, you either said applies or is the same, whether we do the comprehensive watershed management plan or not. And I guess I would like some clarification because that is not.
No, the regulations are there regardless of, we have to abide by these Title V regulations that the state has imposed, is what I'm saying, was what I meant by that, regardless.
Right, the regulations do, but the regulations do, you know, if you put in a comprehensive watershed management plan, it does change.
You can clarify if you need to, but the NOI, if filed, gives us extra time.
The, the.
The regulations are still, Title V regulations are still.
They are suspended in the NSA if we filed NOI. So the regular, if we.
Pretty big difference to me, I guess, was my point, that it doesn't seem like it doesn't matter.
I'll let Mar, maybe I can go to Marlene and let her explain it the way I was explaining that.
Title V is not suspended. Title V as a whole is not suspended.
Oh, right. It's just, I understand that it is just 15.2.1.4.5.
Yes.
I get that we're just talking about those, but that, just those sections, the statement that it would be the same whether or not we filed a comprehensive management watershed management plan, that doesn't, that's not how.
Yeah, maybe that's not how I meant it, yeah. And I mean, in new construction and any, you know, automatically would have to default, would need, you'd have to have an AI system as well, correct?
Not if you file a notice of intent.
Not if you file the notice of intent.
That's what gets suspended.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right. It's the suspended part, correct. So I was a little, maybe I just didn't word that right, so apologies.
And I do, you know, I take your point that, you know, we still should meet the minimums of Title V for construction, but it does seem like the CWMP, the notice of intent, has a very big impact on how those portions of Title V are carried out and enforced.
Correct. Thank you. Bye. Hope that answers.
Right.
Kathy Fox.
Hi, I'm Kathy Fox Alfano and I'm from Greg Abels. I also was on the wastewater advisory committee. And I wanted you to know that we are really working on various ways to solve this problem, not just Title V. We are doing best practices with stormwater management so that runoff from your lawns and from nitrogen, whatever, we deal with that. Also, there are, I'm very much for doing the NOI because there are new ideas coming down the pike. In Falmouth, if you, I don't know if you've been following this, but they have. I don't know if you've been following this, but they have something called the Green Center and they're working on urine-diverting toilets. Urine, by the way, is what is causing the nitrogen problem. And that eliminates it entirely. The total cost for that is about $1,000 a toilet. And, yeah, exactly. And better than that, the urine is collected in a tank and then pumped, just like, you know, you have your septic pumped. And you actually make money because they pasteurize it and use it for fertilizer in farms. So, I know, that sounds like a miracle, right? Okay, so that's only one of the ideas that's coming down the pike. So that's why I think giving us more time to look at all the different things that there are, it would be very wise for the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll go to somebody on Zoom.
Rick is next.
Rick?
He's muted.
If you could come off mute, please.
You're on mute, Rick, yeah, sorry. Start six if you're.
No, he's up there on the top. Here we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm Rick York, our family house in Patoma and I live in McGansett, in the same watershed, so I'm involved two ways in this. And interesting follow-up, actually the previous comment, but there is an inexpensive and more effective option that's in the comprehensive plan, the Born comprehensive plan, and that is composting toilets. And composting toilets, there are types of them, they're not like, they're not urine-diverting. And there are even low-flush burdens that function just like a regular toilet, except it goes into a composting tank, either right in, right under the toilet in a standalone unit or in another tank if you have several bathrooms in your house. You can buy one of these right now at Eastman's Harbor for about $1,000 and they're being used in Massachusetts. So I think the residents should be aware of that option, that if they don't want to spend $30,000 and work for an alternative system on their Title V, system Title V, there is an option to put in a composting toilet. And they have fans, they don't smell, the compost can be used for various things. I have a question into the MWRA to see if they would take compost to mix in with their, the solids from their wastewater treatment plants. In fact, where hands, though, with wastewater treatment plants, the smudge is a solid that has to be dealt with. So compost from composting toilets can go in with that. I don't have an answer yet back from MWRA, but they are in use in Massachusetts. And as a homeowner, I would rather spend $2,000 for a more effective removing nitrogen system than tens of thousands or more for another system. So it's in the plan for the nitrogen-sensitive areas. It hasn't, it wasn't checked off and I don't know why I commented on it, but people should be aware, an individual homeowner at this point could decide to put whatever they want to do as far as I can tell from the regulations. You can apply to the Born Water Health, but I asked them about it. So just be aware of that.
Thank you, sir. I can actually comment on that. We did get a comment from, maybe it was you that submitted that to the MEPA process, but we do have a comment regarding the composting toilets. I'll try to get through, I'll read it really quickly. Composting toilets are primarily utilized for water conservation in areas that are drought-prone or off-grid areas where even septic systems are not feasible. While it is true, composting toilets are more eco-friendly than normal toilets, they require a hybrid system set up to function in a residential setting. Composting toilets achieve nitrogen reduction by separating human waste from other domestic wastewater sources such as shower discharge, kitchen water, laundry waste, et cetera. For residents of the town of Born, a septic system would still be required to receive liquid wastewater and ultimately it would eliminate any cost benefits of having a composting toilet. Also, there are additional costs and responsibilities associated with composting toilets, which include but are not limited to installation cost 500 to 2,000, monthly maintenance cost, owner monitoring, moisture aeration, carbon balance. Lastly, standalone composting toilets may be legal in some municipalities because performance monitoring could be more intrusive and may be open to resident, may open the resident and the town to additional liability. So it says may not be legal, sorry. So that was the comment, that was the recommended response for that. Thank you, though. Great suggestion. All right, next.
Okay, hi, I'm Libby Signal, 180 County Road, Born. I just wanted to say, first of all, I guess a couple points. First point is, you want us to participate, you know how many parcels are, you know, having to pay for all the sewer-ing, you know where we live, you collect taxes from us, let us know what's going on. So, you know, I think the Facebook thing was great. I don't happen to be on Facebook. I don't think that should be how I have to get my news, but I think you know where we live. Second of all, I agree with the notice of intent. I think that is something we should do. I agree that systems are going to change. I think that the urine-diverting toilets, the composting toilets are both things that individual homeowners can do, along with septic improvements and things. But we need to have a more comprehensive plan. The other towns in the Cape have those plans. They're actually progressing on implementing their plans and I'm really disappointed that Born is not really there. And I think the comprehensive plan is absolutely essential so we understand how these pieces all fit together. That's it for me.
Thank you. Any comments from the board on that? Somebody else on? I don't see any more hands up online.
Keith Barber, Pecassett, member of the wastewater advisory committee. I'm also president of the Pecassett Water Quality Coalition. I just wanted to throw out a few facts. So these are numbers that are readily available at various websites. Cost of sewer-ing is about $125,000 per household. That covers the wastewater treatment plant and it covers the construction, digging up the roads, putting in the pipes. That does not include the cost of connecting it to your house from the street. So that's a, those are facts that are available, $125,000 per household for sewer-ing. As far as, as far as where the pollution in our waters come from, 85% of the pollution in our salt water comes from our septic systems. 8% comes from fertilizer. The balance is primarily stormwater runoff. So my wife and I are committed to getting this going ourselves. So we live on the salt marsh in Pecassett. It's in our backyard. So we've been investigating for about a year now to upgrade our system. We have a 50-year-old house with a 50-year-old septic system in the front yard. The water's in the backyard. So we're at the process. We have, all our engineering plan is finished, passed by the Conservation Commission, passed by the Board of Health. So we have questions, we have bids out from four different people to replace our system with a nitro system, which is, most people would say that's the number-one system. So costs that are facts. The nitro tank alone is $28,000. So based on the people that we're talking to, the total cost, when you add the nitro system, you add the engineering and you add the construction and replacing your lawn, whatever you're going to do, is going to be for us about $60,000. And those are facts. I can present papers. Anybody wants to question me on it, I'll show you the data.
Keith, if I could interrupt you for a minute, are you replacing or upgrading?
Replacing.
Okay.
Our system was built in 1978. It's still, according to the terminology, barely passes.
How many bedrooms?
Three. Three bedrooms. I don't know what other variables there are. Very simple. We will replace our current lawn with a Cape Cod lawn, which requires no fertilizer, no watering, and is very, very simple. You don't even have to mow it more than a couple times a year. As far as fertilizers are concerned, anyone who was at town meeting knows that a group, which I was part of, we presented a request for the Board of Selectmen to request from the state how, what kind of a fertilizer bylaw we can present. A fertilizer bylaw would restrict mostly people closest to the water, but here on Cape Cod, we have porous soil and everything flows through from two miles from the water to two feet from the water. It just goes right through the porous soil. That's why we have the new Title V regulations is because of our porous soil. When this first Title V was proposed, the South Coast towns were included. Westport, Dartmouth, Fairhaven were all included. Those people all spoke up and had facts. The soil there is not like it's on Cape Cod. Consequently, we have to have the Title V regulations. If you have children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, the water isn't going to get any better until we do something about it. So we need to do something. So the fertilizer proposal that we made at town meeting was just for the select board to ask permission of the state to create a fertilizer bylaw. So this was on the second night of town meeting. There were about 150 people in the room. Forty-five out of 150 voted to tell the select board, don't even ask. We don't want a fertilizer bylaw. That is just blowing me away. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any new folks online?
Is there a hand on the top?
I'm trying to give anyone, how about out in the other room? We have some folks on the overflow. Is there anyone out there that is interested in speaking?
One more question.
Sewer.
From here.
Oh, no, you have to come to the mic.
The mic, the home.
Is it working?
It goes to, it's the TV mic.
I wanted to ask, suppose somebody didn't want to put on the nitrogen portion, put the septic but not the nitrogen, how do you go about, is that allowed? What's going on with that?
That.
In other words, would you get a fine? How does that work?
That would, that's a Board of Health question for a waiver.
I think I could answer that.
And it's easier, I think, if we filed the NOI than it is if we don't.
So in other words, you just want to put the septic tank in without the other thing that could possibly go wrong, that you pay yearly to have somebody, how does that work? What if I just want my septic put in and not the NIA, whatever?
The IA system?
Yeah.
You can still do that.
Board of Health question.
So if it is after the deadline of 2030, a conventional system won't be approved in those areas if there's no watershed permit. You'd have to have one of the best available nitrogen-reducing technologies.
But not now. You'd have until 2030.
But I'm getting a new septic system put in now.
So at this point, it is still approvable, but it doesn't mean that you won't have to upgrade again in five years.
I would have to upgrade my whole septic system again in five years.
Potentially.
If you're, if she's in the watershed.
If she's in the watershed permit and no watershed permit is filed and she puts a conventional system in today.
So in other words, I have to do, so I'm being made to put this in now, to pay the extra money. I'm being made to do that. And then in five years, I would be made to change up again. I'm just trying to understand how much money I want to spend here now.
So are you, is your, did your system fail?
I think this is a question she should be talking to the Board of Health. It's not our jurisdiction. You should discuss, talk to the health department.
And they don't have all my answers.
Hopefully, yes, they would.
I didn't get all my answers last time. That's what I just thought I'd estimate.
Good thought, thought.
But somebody's got to make a decision.
All right, I think we have, I see Rachel, but she spoke already. Is there anyone online that has not spoken? Then I'll go back to Rachel if not.
Is there a hand on the top there?
That's Rachel again, but I just, I don't mind hearing her again. I just want to make sure there's not someone else in, I see another. Unless he's got another question. But maybe it's her. All right, so if there's nobody at the mic, then Rachel, you can go, go ahead again.
Hi, thank you. I live on Circuit Ave and I just wanted to bring up another point because we do often have power outages and there are some people that have those nitrogen systems in the neighborhood. And I was curious what's going to happen when we lose power and these are those nitrogen systems. Is everybody going to have to have a backup generator? Because that's also a cost that should be involved in, in the new system.
I'm not sure if the select board can answer that question.
Mr. Valeri might be able to.
Not if Mr. Valeri might know that answer or one of these septic installers, he's turning his head. That would certainly be a septic installer question, I do believe. I can't.
Yeah, we're not familiar with the systems enough to understand.
If I was an installer, I would certainly help.
Sorry.
You're at the mic, okay.
I have a nitrogen system.
Oh, okay. Can you state your name and village?
Danielle Maderos from Brooks Road.
Thank you, Danielle.
I had a nitrogen system put in back in 2004, required by the Board of Health. And it is monitored. I had to get a approval from the county of Barnstable and they have a lien on my house if I do not fulfill my requirements for testing. It started out four times a year when I first had the system put in. Now I've graduated to one time a year. But to answer the lady's question, if you lose power, I, we're all losing power, it seems, on a regular basis. I do not have a generator and my system works fine. That's all I can say, is I have a system in.
Can you say what the fee is yearly?
It's probably, it's a couple of hundred dollars yearly and that's if they don't find anything wrong with it. I have what they call a BioClear system. You know, I had engineering done and everything back in, you know, over 20 years ago. And then in the last two years, my leach field failed and I had to just put in a new leach field and the BioClear system itself needed about $5,000 worth of work.
Okay.
So I had to pay $5,000 for that and then a new leach field for the whole system. So I'm hopefully going to get out of this new upgrade, but we'll see because I can't afford to put in something new again. But just to speak for somebody that's got a system.
Thank you so much, ma'am. I'll allow one more. I think we've got, I think we've had a lot of discussion that, you know, everybody's pretty much wanting the, us to do the NOI, but we'll give one more comment and then we can move on. We do have quite a bit on our agenda here and we're already hour, almost two hours in, so.
Thank you. My name's Mavis Robinson and I live in Monument Beach. Thanks for taking my question. I'm trying to not repeat anything that anybody else has said, but thank you to this board for tackling this for us. I know you have a larger-than-usual group of citizens who are worried about this issue and we know that you are here, day after day, week after week, worrying about these things for us. So I think part of why a lot of us showed up here today is sort of, it took me by surprise that we were even considering not filing the NOI. And so I just wanted to make sure I had it sort of set in my brain where we are. It seems like if we, if we file by, the NOI by June 30th or July 7th, I heard somewhere, that that gives us five years to actually craft a comprehensive wastewater management plan for our town, which at that, after five years, when we've got our wonderful plan figured out, we could either say, sorry, we couldn't do it, or now we've got 20 years to put this amazing plan in place. So I just want to make sure I have the understanding correct, that if we don't file the NOI, what's the timeframe on suddenly all the people in that zone needing to upgrade their septic systems? Is that five years that we have to do that? Okay, okay, great. And then.
The NSA zones.
Yes, yeah, in the zones that have been declared, okay. And then also, when we talked about town meeting, I went to both of those nights of town meeting and I thought I remembered us actually voting yes for some extra money for the purpose of this plan. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
$200,000.
Yes. What's happening with those funds if we're not going to file an NOI?
Well, we still have to continue to work on the comprehensive wastewater management plan.
So, yeah, those funds would be, they're for the continuance of that plan to, for the next step.
Whatever's relative to that.
Or to whatever we need next in the plan. That's a good question.
All right, thank you. And again, we appreciate the work you're doing for us and for most of us, we're just kind of half-paying attention to these big issues. Only when it seems to bubble up do we, you know, think, wait a minute, I have to make sure I know what's going on here. So thank you for giving us this clarity.
Thank you. And we appreciate all the comments. I mean, the ones we received online and we certainly do, you know, hear you. You know, I haven't made any decisions either way yet, in my brain, because it's so much to take in and we want to do what's right. So it's been, it's been a hard, it's been a hard, a hard choices here. So moving on.
Could we just have an answer on what date the vote is going to happen at the Selectmen's meeting for the NOI?
I would like to know what the, how board members are thinking about this.
Thank you.
I would like to know how board members are feeling.
We've had a couple of answers, but we haven't had an answer.
So what do we want to do? Let's go on to the next agenda and then we can talk about that when we get down that. when we get down that far. I mean, I think we need to hear... We still need to hear from Apex. We've got quite a bit to do first. So, I mean...
No, but they took the time to come here.
Yeah. So you want to talk about it, I guess? I don't know. Go around the table. What's your thoughts, Vice Chair?
On the next steps?
Yeah. I mean, do you want to just continue down the agenda? Or do you think we should just make this go around the room and see what everybody's thoughts are?
Well, I think it's important that we need to bring this to a full Select Board meeting in the evening. That's really important to me.
That's what I feel.
To ensure, you know, they... People made comments like they couldn't be here. And, you know, we need to do that for the rest of the community who wants to be able to come and be able to have the conversation as well and input into what they think, so.
I mean, we can go around the room and certainly get some thoughts from everyone. But I think I'd feel more comfortable allowing, you know, waiting to a Select Board meeting where others that couldn't come today could be here to give their opinions and speak as well. I just think that's fair.
And they still can give their opinions.
And we have time, you know? This doesn't mean we're not filing the NOI. This just means we need to take a little bit longer till our next meeting so that everybody can fairly be present. But sure, would you like to... You already spoke. Would you like to say something?
Well, I'll tell you what I think. And we haven't gone into the plan. You know, one of the decisions is whether we're going to have our timing with or without a watershed permit. And there's a lot of discussion to have about that because there's things in the recommended plan that have to be changed if we're not going to go for a watershed permit for filing an NOI. I...
Could you speak up, please?
I think that... I think that it's going to be important for the comprehensive wastewater management plan timelines to include the filing of the watershed permits for Finney's Harbor and McGansett Squatique. I... My opinion is the watershed permit notice of intent for these watersheds should be filed by June 30th of 2025. And I think in order to meet this goal, the Select Board needs to ask the town administrator to have town staff prepare the pre-application schedules that are required to be filed with the NOIs for the Finney's Harbor and McGansett Squatique watersheds for review by the Select Board at their meeting of June 10th, 2025, with the goal of the NOIs being filed on or before June 30th of 2025.
Go ahead, Peter.
I concur with what she said.
Yeah, I concur with what MJ said.
You know, I've gone back and forth. There's so much... There's so much information in my head. There's just so much information in my head. And this is... I value the woman who said, "What's the risk?" Right? In that statement. And yes, we do have an out... If we're heading down a watershed permit application process that just... We're not... For whatever reasons, the impacts are so great, and we might think that, okay, maybe this isn't the route to go. So I do get it. I do get... I do understand, MJ. I do understand the impact. I do understand the burden. I do understand the time. But I just want people to understand that even with 20 years, we are still going to be spending... There is still going to be a very big spending dollar amount for this comprehensive wastewater plan that we have to implement over a 20-year period. We're only buying five years. We're really only buying five years right now because we'll have to start implementing this comprehensive wastewater management plan. Yeah.
Can I just say something again? I'm sorry.
Public... I'm sorry. Public comments... I'm sorry. We've concluded the comments.
I mean, quickly. If you can't make a decision, I know, then I have to make a decision, not knowing if we're going to have sewers. So I'm spending all this money. But are we going to have sewers? And then do I have to hook up to a sewer even though I'm going to have a brand-new septic system with the nitrogen thing working? I'm just...
And it does make sense... And it does make sense to file a watershed permit if we're going to sewer because for that exact reason. Why would we have you spend the money? And then, you know, have the cost of a hookup or the cumulative cost.
I just want to point out that last year, in our meeting on June 25th of 2024, the Select Board gave direction to environmental partners for the McGansett Squatique watershed, where primary... Our primary solution was going to be sewer-ing and having a watershed permit. We said that last year at that meeting. For the Finney's Harbor watershed. For the Finney's Harbor. So, and we have to talk about the plan because I feel that when we... If we go the route of watershed permits, that the primary solution needs to be something the town has control over.
Right.
Which needs sewer-ing. And when you look at McGansett Squatique and the cost for the 285 with B A and R T septic systems at $12 million-something dollars and the cost of sewer-ing 150, which would get probably a better result, at $13 million, the cost-effective, more reliable solution is the sewer-ing option. And one of the things that we didn't do in this plan in terms of regional options is discuss joint-based Cape Cod. And when you look at joint-based Cape Cod, which has capacity available and is... Would be four miles of sewer pipe from the edge of that sewer-ing district to the sheriff's office, which has the sewer, that that four miles and that regional option for using joint-based Cape Cod as a sewer-ing option for Squatique has to be looked at. The comments that we got on our comprehensive wastewater management plan were consistently looking at sewer. And the people I've talked to have said, "If I'm going to spend $50,000 or $60,000 or $100,000, I want sewer-ing. I want a reliable solution that's going to work and give us better nitrogen removal." We're talking about, in our plan as it stands now, nitrogen removal to 19 milligrams a liter, when with no nitrogen removal, it says under the technical memo that we're... It's only 26.52... 26.25. So a 28% removal for $12 million versus like $13 million and a higher level of removal, we have to sit back and look at our comprehensive plan, look at the comments that we had. But we need to file the notice of intent. And we need to... We need to take on the responsibility for this plan in regular workshops of the Select Board. If we say for... Until we get our comprehensive management plan, we're going to have a monthly meeting that's going to talk about this issue on a Tuesday night, whenever it is, we have to start really working on it. So I... I'm totally in favor of filing the NOI and having the town administrator come back with the pre-application schedule to our meeting on June 10th so that we can discuss it and vote it.
So, yeah, I mean...
It's the June 30th meeting, don't we?
It's the June 30th meeting.
I said June 10th because I...
I would like to have until July 1st. I would like to have you voted on July 1st.
Oh, I'd like to see this... I'd like to see the... I would like to see the pre-application schedule draft on our June 10th meeting.
I don't know if... I mean, if that's... Is that even feasible for the town administrator? I'm willing to wait until July 1st if that's the time they need to prepare it, you know? So...
But what is... You get to July 1st, and then if we don't have... Then we got days. I mean, you work for us, you know? And we give you the direction, you know? And this is what the people want, you know, that are here. We gotta... I know that if you need more resources if you don't know to get this done, then tell us you need more help and tell us what we need to do.
Do you think it can be done by July... By June 10th?
The pre-application schedule for the NOI is... Is not complex. There's examples of it. You can look at the chat of one. It's got like six things. Six milestones.
What's our meeting after July 10th?
I'm... I will put other things on hold, and we'll take other things off the agenda if that's... If that's how the board wants to proceed.
One question I have, if I could.
Go ahead.
I have food to the consultant. Can you help... Can you assist her with this? Or has our money been spent on your assistant contract?
Our money's been spent. Their contract is complete.
It's complete.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's coming up in the next agenda. We'll talk about that.
We have the extra money too. But I'm just trying to find resources to get this done.
Okay.
I'll remove other... We can remove other things that you are working on.
So how about we take a look at agenda?
We'll look at the agenda, see what we can adjust to try to get it done a little sooner to satisfy everyone.
So I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion that the CWMP timeline should include the filing of the watershed permits for the Finney's Harbor and McGansett Squatique watersheds.
Say that again.
CWMP timeline includes...
The comprehensive wastewater management timelines should include the filing of watershed permits for the Finney's Harbor and McGansett Squatique watersheds. A watershed permit notice of intent for these watersheds.
Didn't we just say we were going to vote on this at the next meeting?
I'm making a motion. Should be filed by June 30th, 2025. Should be filed by June 30th, 2025. In order to meet this goal, the Select Board directs the town administrator to have town staff prepare the pre-application schedules required to be filed with the NOIs for the Finney's Harbor and McGansett Squatique watersheds for review by the Select Board at the meeting of June 10th, 2025, with the goal of filing the NOIs on or before June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Well, we're going to have to take a lot off the agenda. Other agendas. But if it's a priority of the board and the board so votes, then it's the priority of the board and with the understanding that things are going to have to be put on hold. I think it's a tight timeline. But we're in a tight time constraint, right?
So we have a motion in the second? Move around. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on.
How did you record the vote?
5:00.
5:00.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we have Apex to go over the overview of the recommended plan and then to talk about wrapping up Apex. And a vote... We may need a vote to do so.
Good evening. So we've been asked to come and make a presentation on the recommended plan, talk about the recommended plan, the MEPA process, and then also next steps. What we have here is a map of the recommended plan that shows the entire town. As has been the conversation all along this evening is that two of the areas of town are considered nitrogen-sensitive areas. And it is Finney's Harbor and McGansett Squatique. As you all know and have heard this evening as well that we've been having conversations about the entire town for the last number of years and had some public meetings, had the Wastewater Action Advisory Committee and the board weigh in on the desires of the town and what they wanted to do to move forward with potential recommendations. The analysis, particularly for the two TMDL watersheds, were based on studies and requirements that the MEAP analysis by the state has done. They identified what the reduction requirements would be for each of those areas. At the end of the analysis, the needs analysis, the alternatives analysis, and so forth, that was done for the project, the community decided to move forward with a recommendation for sewer-ing in Finney's Harbor to look at expansion of the school, middle school treatment plant and discharge area and to do sewers that include some gravity and then also low-pressure sewers. And the McGansett Squatique area, we did look at in... I do want to preface this with all the areas of town that we looked at, we do have both a approach for what is being called Ban-Rat, which is best-available nitrogen-removal technology, and also sewer-ing. So there is an option for sewer-ing for each of these areas. And there was a determination of this being the initial approach, which was sewer-ing in Finney's Harbor and Ban-Rat and McGansett Squatique, which are the first priority based on the fact that they are TMDLs and need to be addressed sooner than the other areas. As we know, Buttermilk Bay and Pecasset and others are currently under study and analysis. And the state will provide direction in terms of withdrawal requirements once those TMDL studies are complete. Until that time, we assumed as a basis for the analysis of the remaining areas of Bourne that a 25% reduction would be met with whatever recommended plan we put forth. That was cleared with MASDEP. And we did have, the study was done with the when we first put the study together, the watershed, the comprehensive wastewater management plan was presented to MASDEP with approval to move forward with the approach that was being recommended in terms of conducting a needs analysis, conducting alternatives analysis, and then coming up with some recommendations. As I indicated, sewers are an option always. Everything is based on what is economically feasible and then, at the end of the day, what the community wants. There is always more than one way to address an issue that you have. So if we look at McGansett's Quatig area in particular, we did look at options for sewer-ing. Joint Base Cape Cod very early on was looked at when we were doing the alternatives analysis. At the time that that was being conducted, the federal government was in the process of negotiating ownership of their facility to transfer over to a company called Converge, who subsequently has purchased that wastewater system and, including the collection system and the treatment plant. They are looking potentially for users. They have a long row, road to go down in terms of finding a potential for a location for a discharge permit expansion and also an expansion of their wastewater treatment plant. And that certainly will be something that if you were, if you do enter into a notice of intent and do follow forward with a watershed permit, it would give you time to have conversations and coordinate and really understand what the long-term costs of that are going to be. Converge isn't moved forward enough with their plan right now to be able to solidify those dollars in relationship to that particular area.
Can I just make a comment? Because I think part of what you're saying is response to my comment.
Sure, you can.
So there was, I mean, BORN participated back in 2019 when the original discussions were happening. I, I'm gonna say that like the wastewater advisory committee never really had a conversation about Joint Base Cape Cod. We, we really kind of stopped participating. They, Converge is still having monthly meetings with Sandwich and Sandwich is still looking at options, which is part of that question with the, the whole inspector general thing not wanting to pay for money. Improving, I mean, I don't even wanna go there. But I think it's worth the discussion. At this point, I think entering into some of the discussion with Converge is an option we should consider. They have permitted discharge for 360,000 gallons through their infiltration beds into the Cape Cod Canal, which is part of what they're thinking about is expanding. But they have, they have available sewerage and the heavy, the McGansett's Quatig is really close. And it was listed as an alternative for Phineas Harbor, for the Phineas Harbor watershed, and it wasn't listed as, as an alternative for the McGansett's Quatig watershed. And I think it should be listed as an alternative for that watershed because I think it's close. I mean, four miles for a sewer pipe is not that long.
What's the current usage of that capacity? Like, how much excess capacity?
I have, I forget exactly, but there's, they have, they, it's only 30,000 for McGansett and they definitely have that. I think they have, I think they have at least 100,000. I mean, and it's hard because they're talking about developing the base, you know, that whole mass thing. Yeah, but I, I think it's worth having the conversation. Yeah.
Thank you, continue. Thank you, Helen.
Okay.
Sorry for that.
So that's generally what the recommended plan is. I mean, we can get into details. I'm not sure exactly, when I had a conversation with staff, we talked about making my presentation sure and really looking to the board to answer any questions that you might have associated with it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I have to mute this.
Sorry. You did make mention of the, so the recommended.
I'm gonna mute this.
Press six if you need to mute, if you're on your phone. Oh, she got it.
Yeah. Thanks, Marlene.
So I did provide some summary tables that we had put together in terms of the first and second tier, as was referred to previously. The first tier being the TMDL areas and the second tier being the areas that are not TMDLs. On the townwide recommended plan, we present here what the costs were associated with that, that I just presented. In terms of implementing schedule and timeline recommended plan without watershed permit, MJ, you did bring up a point on that particular table. What, that we have the wrong numbers. And I agree with you in that I think what has happened is it's a copy of the, with the watershed permit. So my apologies associated with that.
Could, can we just talk about this a bit?
Yeah.
I mean, because like the, if you have a comprehensive wastewater management plan, timeline scheduled out, it has to be legal. In other words, it has to be, it has to follow the regulations, right?
Correct, yes.
And so, so if the, if we were not gonna file a watershed permit, then the first five years in McGansett's Quatig.
Would be the 390.
Correct. Because that's the developed lots.
Yes, that's correct.
And so, and so that, that number at the $42,428 per system average is 16,546,948, which is $4 million more than the, the recommended plan where you, you know, you and then on the Phineas Harbor, and I, I think the, the developable parcels there, it's 1,246 parcels in the watershed. I think it's 1,145 are developed. And so that cost without the watershed permit is 48,580,060.
Correct.
So, and I think, so that's an important distinction.
That is a very important.
It's a very important distinction of, with the watershed permit and without a watershed permit. And hopefully we've resolved that, but I think that's a, a change that would have to be put into this plan.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I would, I would agree with that. Even with the watershed permit, ultimately, if you did go with BanRAT, that would be the cost because you'd be moving ahead, only it would be spread out over a 20-year period.
Right.
So I think that one of the things that I might suggest in terms of this table would be to also provide a little more context on with the watershed permit, the number of parcels, the years it would take, and the dollars spread out over a 20-year period. Would that make more sense to add that?
You mean with? One of the things that occurs to me is on table three, which is on page 13 of the, the plan. This townwide recommended plan is with a watershed permit.
That.
This townwide recommended plan is with a watershed permit. It is not without, it can't be done without a watershed permit under, this scenario can't be done.
Correct, yes.
So I think that's really, I think that's a really important distinction for the townwide recommended plan.
Yes.
Can I ask a question about?
If you, you have to get up to the mic, sir, if you're gonna ask a question, sorry. The, the folks at home cannot hear you, so it's important that you're up there.
Stan Eldridge out of County Road. What, one of my concerns is you're talking McGansett Harbor, half of that is in the town of Falmouth. We're also talking about the treatment plan on Joint Base Cod, Base Cape Cod. What is Falmouth doing? Do we have to be worried about Falmouth jumping in front of us, taking that space of the treatment center at Joint Base, Base Cape Cod? Because that treatment center can only take X amount of gallons per day. If Falmouth gets in front of us, North Falmouth is a large area on McGansett. If they beat it to the punch, we're back at the drawing board again. We need to be proactive on this, on this whole system, townwide. That's just something, my thought. I'd be worried about Falmouth getting up there way before us and we'll have no plan.
Yeah, thank you so much. I think what we'll do is why don't we let Helen finish her presentation and then we can take questions after? I think that makes more sense, but I appreciate it.
Okay. So just in terms of the MEPA process update, public, we went through the MEPA process with the recommended plan. We received public comment. The public comment period closed February 24th, 2025. We received comments both from stakeholder groups and then also individual public comments. And what we have done is reviewed and prepared a response for each of those comments, which are the detailed tables that we provided the board before the meeting, in your packet. There are numerous comments, so I don't, unless the board wants us to walk through each one, which we certainly can if that's the pleasure of the board, we can do that, or I can take questions. I think, just in terms of process, the next steps would be to finalize the CWMP recommended plan document. So the intent, from my perspective on that, would be to incorporate any editorial changes that need to be done in terms of the current CWMP, which are some of the things that we were just discussing right now. And then also to add a section on the MEPA review process with the comments and the responses to those comments. The MEPA review also indicated that in order to move ahead with a CWMP, because they were going to require that a draft environmental impact report and a final environmental impact report be conducted. Now, you can do one of two things if you wanna move any of the plan forward. You could, for example, for Phineas Harbor, do a standalone, and this could become, since you are, since you are planning on submitting an NOI, you could start considering towards a watershed permit application, preparing the scope of work for the draft DIR and the FEIR to implement your recommended plan for Phineas Harbor. And have a schedule associated with that and put that forth. And you could do the same for McGansett's Quatig if you are doing a watershed permit. If you're going to do, stick with what we call BanRAT, again, for those in the audience, best available nitrogen removal technology system. My recommendation would be, if you're going to stick with that, with McGansett, then what you could do is submit a DEIR and a FEIR for the remaining watersheds that are looking at BanRAT. So you can say, this is how we're going to manage them moving forward. This is what it's going to cost, so on and so forth. If you decide to move ahead with sewer-ing, then that project, you could do a separate draft DIR, FEIR for. So that would be the approach to take if you were doing a watershed permit. And it would give you more time to do those environmental impact reports. And I really didn't have anything else prepared.
No, that's okay. All right, so does the, the board have any comments? I did see one hand that was up earlier from Rob Manson, I think it says. Rob, go ahead.
Hello. Thank you for all the work you're doing. I just wanted to, you know, as, as Marlene and some of you are aware, I'm directly impacted by this in Monument Beach due to rock size more than, more than anything else. But I have to put one of these systems in minus north of $100,000, all in. So I guess my question just relating to that is, I'm in favor of the NOI. I'm glad you guys are doing that, thank you. Is there any chance of changing scope on this CWMP where we have more of Monument Beach being included in the sewer system? Or is it just limited to that particular area? Is there discussion periods that happen further on down the line before that plan is filed? Or is that plan, as we just saw, sort of the final version?
Boy, that's a good question. I don't know who I would address that question to, Marlene or to?
Helen.
Helen, yeah.
I mean, I, I think, Helen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's fair to say that the plan is extremely early right now and everything is subject to change in it.
Yes.
Correct. Everything is subject to change. So let's go down the path for, quickly, I mean, if you weren't doing a watershed permit, if you were going to Phineas Harbor and looking to implement sewer there and that was gonna be your approach to manage it, you would prepare a draft DIR and an FEIR. During that period, you would be looking at the plan. You would be determining if you were going to expand that sewer area at all. And within the, the next five years, you would wanna get that done and approved by the state so you could move forward with the sewer-ing project. If you do it without, with the permit, then you have a little more time to do that. So what we would first do is look at the wastewater treatment plant, the capacity of the plant, the capacity of the discharge beds, look for discharge beds that could support the discharge we're looking for. So there's some technical things that would have to be done in order to determine how much you could expand that sewer area to. And then that would be a determination of the town of whether or not you wanted to spend the money to expand. The area that's shown is shown as an area, if sewered, will meet your TMDL requirements. It doesn't mean that you can't do more. However, if you do more, that will be in areas that aren't needed to meet the TMDL. I don't know if I explained that correctly or if you'd like me to reword that at all.
I see Rob's hand up one more time. Do you have a follow-up question, Rob? Or is your hand just still up?
My hand is just still up.
Okay, okay, no problem. Just wanted to make sure Peter caught that. Thank you, Peter. Okay, I hope that answers your question maybe. All right, so I guess, where are we now with Helen? We have, you've given us your presentation and now the board.
Just, I just, there is a regularly scheduled Board of Health meeting at 5:30 in this room tonight.
There is, oh, wow.
Just wanted to let you guys know.
Okay, yeah, so we've got. How are we supposed to plan that out, Marlene? We have quite a bit.
Originally, this was a 3:00 to 4:30.
Three to 4:30.
Yeah, I know, well, it took quite a while with our public comments and all of that, so.
I, I feel, this is just my, I feel that we've been doing this since 3 o'clock. And that we are going to be discussing on June 10th the pre-application submission. So maybe, maybe we continue the discussion at that, this discussion at that meeting.
I guess that, that's fine by me if that's the.
I don't know, I'm a little confused about the terminology, finalizing the plan. I mean, is this, and, and the reason I say that is in the comments that we received from, in the MEPA comments and the responses, there were a lot of comments about sewer-ing and it said, the board, a select board will, you know, will take the, reconsider this and the board or select will reconsider this. And it's not clear to me when that's gonna happen. Is that reconsideration gonna be happening before we finalize our plan? Or are we gonna finalize our plan and then consider it? I feel we should be doing it before we finalize our plan, so.
If I, if I might, one of the things I just wanna make clear is If I, if I might, one of the things I just want to make clear is, so we got the MEPA comments, we made responses, we've given those to you to look at. I think it's important that you spend the time that you need to look at those comments and let us know how you want that incorporated into the document, if there's anything else that needs to be. We are committed to giving you a final document. Whether or not you decide to go to town meeting with that or to use it as the basis of part of your watershed permit, submission and application moving forward is up to you. I'm committed to getting this to you and getting this right. Okay? And I want to be clear on that. I know that, quote unquote, "our work is done." My work isn't done for the town of Bourne until this gets refined. And so I would be more than happy to have a conversation with the board in, or the staff in any way, on all those comments that we prepared responses for, to see how that gets coordinated into either your watershed permit or what you want it to look at. I cannot do extensive study, but certainly we can get this to a point where it needs to get.
Okay, so I-
I think I need another meeting.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to recommend, you know, that because, you know, we are at the end of this, the money is now final, it's, you know, and I would recommend that we try to get a motion on the table to wrap up with Apex. Get what we have and then figure out what's next. So, that to you shaking your head, but I'd like to hear what everybody else is, is thinking about. I mean, we, we, the money is gone, it's been depleted, so.
I think what Helen's saying is her final act is to finish this document the way we want her to finish it. Do we want her to incorporate the, the comments and how, where do those fit in the document? That's what you're asking us, Helen.
Right. Right. So, so those responses will become part of the document. Those need to be your responses, so. I can't say, so my suggested response was, based on the fact that the public comment seems to want sewers, my recommendation would be that the response is that you reconsider that. However, that is not my decision to make. So in order for me to incorporate these comments and any other edits that we indicated on those responses that we were going to include in the document, I need the board's input on that. And I am going to give you a final plan that has that incorporated into it.
On the wrap-up, yeah.
Okay? So.
Perfect. Do we need any motions for any of that?
I think we just have to schedule another meeting.
Yeah, just schedule another.
Just sort of, what's in this, what's, what we haven't done on this agenda, we need to put on another agenda.
Yeah. We got a lot of it done. It was a lot, and we did, it was important that we heard from the voters and the residents because that's what really, you know, that's what matters here tonight, so. Okay, then, I guess.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn from MJ, second from Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, standing? Okay, it's like we're good.